The Independence School District is now in order. It is 6:01 PM on June 15, 2023. A quorum is present while all board members accept Kevin Telchik and Melissa Bussell. This meeting has been duly called and the notice of this meeting has been posted in accordance with Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code, Chapter 551. Mr. Lomarede, would you please lead us in prayer, please?
Yes. I want to apologize before I pray the last time that they make it on time and then the other time I had an emergency when my uncle's passed away, so.
I'm sorry.
We're just glad you're here, Aral.
We're glad you're here. Glad to be here.
Glad to be here and honored to have been asked to pray this prayer. Father in the name of Jesus, I pray that all decisions made and everything that is discussed will honor and glorify you and be for the betterment of the community and by everybody involved, Father. I pray wisdom and knowledge and understanding will come to our minds, our hearts, Father, and be directed by your Spirit, Father, to get you to help us, Father, in this community for this, for all citizens and especially education and children and everybody involved. Whatever decision is made, Father, we pray that everybody will come to an agreement and an understanding that it's not for personal use or benefit for one person but for all involved, Father. We pray this in Jesus' name and thank you for it. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Lomarede. Did anybody kind of vote? We're gonna take a moment in silence for the passing of Stephanie Brown and the husband of Nancy Spraberry. I guess we'll go to routine district operations. Anybody have any questions or moments?
Make a motion to approve, is that it?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. I guess now we'll go to the financial report with Mr. Wrong.
You're just the star of the show.
I know. Not sure if I'm a fan of that, no. So first item, first item up are the financial statements. We'll start with the, we'll start with the general fund by function. We should be, this month we should be at 75% mathematically where we should, where we should be for the nine twelfths or the ninth month, the twelve months. It shows 84.47% at the very bottom down there, but if you look at the math for year-to-date activities to the revised budget, you'll see that our, I calculated that we're at 79% with the 5% remaining being encumbered amounts and we still have, so we still have a little bit of leverage. I also took the math and looked at where we were from that 79% and what the balance would be per month available to use before, from the budget before the end of the year. My calculations show that we're still on track at $1.6 million a month. If we hold to that for the next three months, we will fall within a, what our revised budget, under or even to what our revised budget is. So again, I do that for the math, really just for the math, but I also speculate that June, July should be slower months. This particular month is, for the month of May, we were at $2 million and I thought the last two months we've been at 1.6, which seems to be a good trend for us, but being at $2 million, I thought, what in the world happened? So I looked and looked back at some of the capital expenditures and about, about $400,000 of that, $402,000 of that was capital improvements, which we didn't see the previous two months. So we are holding to our number in operations at the 1.6. What made a jump this month was some of the capital.
And, and May is always going to be an extremely busy month because you have all of the end of the year, all of the appreciations, all the graduations, all the banquets. It's just, it's a much more expensive year than the ones leading up to it or following.
That's correct. And also a lot of the, a lot of us that go to comforts for our CT, we have to have everything in before the end of, of May, so it does, it does, some of those numbers are higher this time of the month. And that should fall, that should fall back into place and hopefully if we maintain about a $1.6 million monthly activity, then we'll be, we'll be fine compared to budget. I hope that our revenue does the same thing. The next report, oh, I'm sorry. Any questions? The next report is the revenue year-to-date. You can see that our activity, year-to-date activity is at 16 million. And that, that number will of course get better because of our money we receive not only from taxing, but local taxing, but also from, from the state. We get approximately a million dollars a month from them. So we'll be, I think we'll be all right with our funding. And we had a, we had a good year on the investment report, you'll see, but we had a pretty good year and earned income because of our fund balance and what the, what the interest rate rates were doing. So that was kind of nice to pick up a, a good sizable amount of cash that was unearned. It was just there for the. So on the revenue year-to-date, it shows that we're at 80%. That's considered above because, I'm sorry, I think, yeah, it's considered above. That's the good percentage because it's above the 75% average. The next page is the monthly capital outlay. You can see that's, that's that $405,000 percent against the budget that was not operations.
And do we, as far as the insurers, every?
Still working.
Okay.
We've gotten some good news.
Yes.
But there's just some, we haven't got any bad news. There's just some slow news.
Yeah.
On some of that stuff.
So we did actually collect or get a check and in fact, we got it just a few days ago. It's being processed and put in the bank most likely tomorrow. We got a $413,000 check from the insurance company.
And they almost messed up because they accidentally put two of the exact same checks and they're not about to go to the public.
They didn't like my answer. They duplicated the checks. We stopped paying on one because we hadn't seen them waiting and, and then when it came to us, it was in the same envelope.
I could have said their bag.
Yeah, I don't know how that happened, but it did.
Would have been spent with Red Fox.
Two minutes left. Next item is the monthly capital outlay under the 199 reference in the 699 capital projects funding. So it's just a different way of looking at it, where the money, where the money was allocated in the 199 fund versus the other capital project fund of 699, just the way we track it. The next item is the monthly check registry. And I go through this and just look for things that stand out, catch my eye, whether it's a dollar amount or whether I'm looking at some categories in particular like monthly contracts or utility bills, different things that just might catch my eye if the number's higher than usual. Also, if I don't recognize something, I'm trying to ask questions to see who it is and why we pay them, but I, I didn't catch, I didn't see anything in this particular register. I leave that open for discussion to see if anybody has any questions about, about it. Maybe I can answer on the registers.
Good. I don't have any questions.
Everybody good?
Yeah.
And, and if you see something down the road, just give me a, just give me a call. We'll, we'll chase it down.
Make a motion to accept this, presenter.
All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero.
The next item on the agenda is the quarterly investment report. And it's for March, April, and May. You can see on that report where we have our balance, our interest earned and the ABR received on that particular account. March was at 5.05, 5.07, 5.06, a couple of them in there. April was 4.99 and May's was about 5.32. And we earned in March an interest of $94,000, most of that in the operating fund. Same thing in April, $88,770. And then in May, $89,778 for a total of $272,960. That's a nice chunk of money for an interest owner to, to save. So, and that's one quarter and I think that's pretty consistent, that rates for the last six months has been pretty consistent. So what we're doing, you know, we're making that extra money to help cover some related expenses. The operating account, to, to just reference what, where our cash is right now, most of our cash is in the operating account and currently for May is at 17.6 million dollars with payroll adding another $397,000, which is a total of 18, about $18 million. That's, that's a pretty good chunk of change to, to have and that's our, that basically is, is our, our reserve. That's our fund, basically our fund balance. Some of the debt service and the capital projects, et cetera, are set aside. They're not reserved, but they are set aside for other things, so I do not consider that a part of your operating fund and your fund balance.
But our, and we talked about this a lot, our fund balance. I'm very pleased with where it's at because I was concerned it was going to be a little lower than what we always thought it was, but to be in that 17 range after everything we've done, that, that's a, that's a good number right there.
So if the interest rates hold up, I think we'll see a pretty good chunk of money next year also. I hope they do. And that's it. That's a simple report. The next item is donations. And just, I don't, we just received $1,320 as a donation. I didn't do any research on this, I'm not.
I got you. It was around when he passed away and people, you know, Christie, instead of people helping the family out, she just kind of put out to the public, I would rather you help the school out. We didn't know if anybody would or not, but since they did, we're, we want to try to turn this into a scholarship of some kind. And you know, for a scholarship purposes, that's not the biggest amount, but it's something, but I think it's a start and you know, we're gonna, you know, Coach Pierce was a big track guy, so we're gonna kind of rename our track meet after Coach Pierce and maybe use that to kind of supplement the scholarship every year. And even if it's small, I think that would mean a lot that we could give a student something every year.
Maybe thinking of that.
Absolutely. So that's the plan with that.
The next item is budget amendments and there are no budget amendments. And the next item is purchases over $50,000. I just put in here, this is actually, probably should be an accident item. We may have to come back to that because it's, it's a proposal for all the furniture and fixtures in the middle school library. They wanted to make it more like the high school library and some of this will probably be, should be covered by insurance. We'll just have to determine what that is as we go forward with Chris Norris and the insurance company and see what portion they're gonna pick up.
Yeah, he told us for sure. He just can't tell us how much.
It's gotta be equal to what we lost.
Furniture-wise.
Furniture-wise and, and the rest would be that we, we would pay. We do have the available funds from those improvements also, so. I don't think we can take action on that because.
When does that have to get approved?
Well, we need to pay for it and get it ordered and paid for before the end of August. We don't know how much the insurance is.
Yeah, I think we can put it on in July.
We should have a better idea. The next item is the discussion of bank depository renewal for 2023, 2025. So we're good with the bank right now in terms of not having to go out for bids on it. We were at the appraisal district office the other day and they went out, just went out for their bids, for, for their banking and they got one bid and it was from First United Bank and they put out bids to all the banks in the community to bid on that and they got one response, it was First United and nobody else responded to that. And I'm thinking if we go and do an RFP for that, then we're gonna see, we're gonna see the same thing. We do have a meeting next week.
With that guy that just walked in?
Oh, yes. We have a meeting next week with, with him and we're gonna have some discussion about that, but, but our thoughts are that we're happy with, that we have, we're glad, glad to be doing business with them and we don't necessarily need to do anything because it is, it goes through 2025, so.
At which point we will have to go out for bids.
Yeah, we would have to go out for bids at that time, just to follow the rules. Next up is a presentation from Aramark about the food service and I'm gonna turn that over to Joyce Trevino.
And they are who brought the cookies, so thank you guys.
Y'all did make that cookie, them cookies right.
I made them myself.
I've got two.
They're two different. That's what I was thinking too. I think I'm supposed to.
Well, it's just the board reports are what we're gonna be showing here and the other one's Gary's actual presentation. I'm just gonna kind of, so I'll get started with the next slide and so I only want to take a short little break of your time. I know you guys are busy, so five, 10 minutes, just to kind of give you a quick recap of how they performed this year. And I'll start with introductions. Everybody knows Gary. He's been the director here for five years now. Been working with Aramark for 10 years. Very happy to have him on my team. Charlisse, of course, is his administrative assistant, which basically food service director assistant because she helps him with everything. She's amazing. Been with Aramark and Lamisa for three years, so very happy to have her on this team with him. Gary talks about her all the time. He couldn't do it without her, he says, so.
She does, she helps me a lot.
And for myself, for those of you that don't know me, of course, I'm the district manager. I've been with Aramark for 24 years and even I was a Lamisator about 12 years ago. I was the director out here once for a year. Very short little break, but it always makes me feel like I'm coming home when I'm here because it was my first director job, so. Yes, very happy to be here. But we're gonna go into some quick highlights, then some challenges we had to overcome and then we'll give you a short financial update and then of course, we're gonna move into our visions of the future that we've been working collaboratively with Ron and with Mr. Ritchie, so. All right? All right. So our highlights for the year, of course, are the culinary innovation that we try to put into our menu. As you know, the cookies that you had today probably have more calories than, than one whole student meal is allowed to have per TDA. So we have to get very innovative in trying to make the food very pleasing to our students to try to get them to eat. Sodium is a challenge, which you'll see in our, in our challenges we have to overcome, but we work really hard with limited, limited time addition promotions, different special promotions that we do to try to get our students to try new things, just to try to make sure that they continue to come and try to eat with us when there's so much competing. They can bring food from home. There's, you know, there's so many food places around that they can even just now, people are getting food delivered to the cafeterias. I mean, it's very hard for us to try to get them to stay there and eat. But one of the things that we've done, of course, is we tried to focus on breakfast a lot this year and again, breakfast is, we, we partnered with a company called Smarty Pants and they've kind of like done a big research on what students want to eat for breakfast and the big one is sweets. And because of that, we end up trying to put like donuts and whole grain donuts, which can be a challenge again too, because they're like, hey, these don't taste the same, but we still try to give them things like that. So on the flip side, we also participated in the Farm Fresh Challenge also to bring in, yes, we're giving you all these donuts and kind of things that you think are really like sweet and that they're going to be what you're finding on the street, but here we brought in fresh fruits and vegetables from local farmers to just try to help to kind of bring them in to, even though you're eating this other stuff that may not be as pleasing to you, a lot of fruits and things that they haven't even tasted that they are very surprised to have. We did, we did tomatoes here was from, and I can't see it.
They're from Marfa Farms.
Marfa Farms, so they had a lot of local farmers that we tried to help and just by bringing them in as well to have their food out there and we put up signs just to show the students where they're coming from. And another big highlight this year was with the labor shortages that almost everyone is seeing, I think Lamisa SD is probably seeing that as well. Gary was able to retain all of his employees, 100% employee retention, which is amazing. That's a testament to his management with Charlisse because holding on to your people and struggle this time of year, it's, it's tough to do. So that's a good job to them for Abel, because I always say it, it starts with the leader, right? But again, back to the challenges, I spoke about the sodium and whole grain restrictions. TDA requires us to be 80% sodium, whole grain, which again, students don't want to eat a whole grain burrito with a tortilla or a whole grain biscuit. So again, we have to get imaginative. We do biscuits and then we sprinkle a little bit of cinnamon on them to try to give them another little flavor and just different things that we can do in our burritos and like we can't put salt in any of our food anymore, so we're getting crazy with garlic and cayenne and just different innovative just ideas to try to, how do we spice up our food without sodium? And because of that, even our manufacturers right now are struggling. They are even trying to limit the sodium in something as basic as tomato sauce, which tomatoes already have enough of their own natural sodium that our manufacturers are even struggling to come to these targets and we struggled this year with, we had to reach target one. Next year, they're gonna let us go to target two, so that is gonna be another challenge. But again, one of the other shortages that we saw this year was just supply chain. They were out of so many different things and I'm sure you guys all saw that when you went out to the grocery store, sometimes there wasn't eggs, there wasn't milk. Well, although we were facing those items, Gary and his team did an excellent job of quickly making menu changes so that our students here never saw that. They never went without, they never, hey, we didn't have chicken patties because we didn't get any. He just got creative and he was like, I'm gonna bring something else in, we've replaced it with something else. So although worldwide, we were all seeing it, our students here probably didn't even notice that it was there because he continued to keep fresh items on the menu and just knew, knew things. And then increased student allergens. I mean, allergens has again, just been, it's booming over the couple, past couple of years. So much that even sesame was added to the faster act and so now we're having to reevaluate all of our recipes to take sesame out and different things like that because now that's one of the, the, one of the main allergens that has been brought up. And because of that, I mean, Gary's had to do some extra steps, like for example, this, for the first time ever, he's had a gluten-free student that chose to eat in his cafeteria this year and he's had to do just a special menu for this one student, for an elementary student, and he's had to go out and locally source things in Lubbock. He goes to Whole Foods and to Sprouts and buys food for them and then brings it here and just keeps it in the freezer and just every day they make this one meal for this one student, but that's again, just where he goes above and beyond to make sure that we're feeding our students. All right? So moving from that, financial update, let's quickly. Again, the program itself is self-sustaining. Y'all make really good meal participation. Breakfast has seen a 70% increase or 70% meal participation, which is an 18% increase from last year. And I asked him to give me a little bit of information on that and he said it was because we brought back the VIC program in the middle school. So again, I think the decision had been stopped last year to change it up, to see how it went and we saw that, yes, the students are taking advantage of it, we'll bring it back to them. So I think that's really beneficial to our students to continue to do that. Lunch stayed at 75%, which is good. At least they're all, the ones that are needing the meals, they're eating, they're coming in, they're consistently coming in. And then a la carte, saw a little bump of 2%. Asked him for some of the things that he was doing and he got again innovative. He brought in smoothies into the high school and iced coffee. So if you've ever gone into the high school, you can get you an iced coffee in the high school. All-in-all, meals increased 240 per service day, which again, is a pretty good increase over, when you have a district like this one that you already feed everyone for free, it's, it's a challenge because again, the ones that are gonna eat are gonna eat, but to find new ones to come in and eat, that's pretty good. So he's been increasing to keep finding ways to get more students in. And then of course, your client return at the end of the year, right now through May, since we're still going through June, you're at $263,000, which is, I did my math earlier, where's my number, about $4,000 more than last year at this time. So he's still made a little bit more money just by, again, reimbursements. We're still getting the additional reimbursements, not as high as we were getting last year, but all the additional meals and everything is just bringing in more reimbursements to help him, which if you look at the next slide, it helps him come to, to the district and say, hey, you know, we've got this extra money, what can we do to bring new ideas, new innovative things to the district? And so this is where he and Ron and Mr. Ritchie work together and these are the things that we're looking at to try to see what we can bring in for the next year, just things that will not only help our students because we'll be able to serve them better meals, like the Alto Sham air fryers, which will fry up the fries nice and crispy instead of getting like this oven fry that kind of bends. These will be some nice crispy fries. That's some, one of the things that we're considering about adding in at both of the schools. So many different things you can put in there. You can put the chicken legs in there and you'd get this nice crispy crunch on it that looks like it's fried. I mean, the pictures, we've even had live demos when we found out to like some of our meetings and the food difference is major. So I think that's definitely gonna be beneficial. I think our students would love to see some food from that. Definitely some new ovens we need to bring in, maybe some new tilt skillets. On equipment, that's pretty much it because you guys are pretty good here. Y'all've got, your kitchens are great, they're in a good shape. But then on the other side, we'd like to see about maybe updating the marketing in the elementaries. You know, this is our new marketing, it's the cold calf. I know the ones we had before were like these bright yellows and oranges. We've kind of calmed it down to a little bit of a, more of a pastel coloring, kind of, that's kind of the new style going on right now. So we'd like to see if we can bring that in to the elementaries, just to kind of give it a little boost in there. But then on the other side of that, I think we'd like to focus more on what we can do for the parents. And one of the things is that a lot of the parents, they don't know what we do, what, what is it that we can do for them? So we also have these parent food service awareness newsletters that we're going to ask technology to put on the website now so that parents can go on there and just kind of as well, get new updates about what's, what's the healthy thing to do and it's got new recipes, it's got all these different things that, just another spot. for them to be able to get some more educational pieces. And on the other side of that, part of the wellness plan that TEA, TDA makes every district do is all teachers have to, they have to do some kind of food health wellness as part of their curriculum, as part of their minutes that they have to do. Well, Airmark's created something called the ASHA. It's eight little short videos that they can play for their students and it actually counts for their minutes. And so it's already done, it's already approved through TEA. You can just, they can just get on there and show these little videos and it talks about, again, eating healthy and all of that. So that's something we'd like to make available to, to our teachers, so that they can take advantage of that. So they're not having to come up with ideas of what are we going to talk about on food? Because that's not their forte, right? They don't talk about food every day, they've got other things to think about. So we've got that there for them as well. And then, of course, our final thing that we'd like to also promote this year is that we'd like to bring Nutrislice to the district. Nutrislice is an online menu tool system that our menu, instead of just handing out the color sheet that we hand out every month, you could go onto your app every day, you just download the Nutrislice app, you go in there and once you save it for your district, it's saved on your phone. But they can go on there, they can look every day to see what the menu is for their school, they'll pick their school. You can go to any school you have, if you've got students in the high school and in the middle school. But the thing that's beneficial about it is that it's smart friendly for like allergens. Say your student is allergic to soy. You can go on there and you can click soy and it'll tell you which items they should avoid. So it don't know like, hey, Charlize, don't eat this burger today because it's a soy burger, that kind of thing. It'll definitely help them to be prepared when they come to school and you're, you could have already given them that little heads up. So I think that'll be a really good addition to the district to just give you, and give parents another little step ahead and get them prepared for the day. But that's where we're at, just short and sweet. I wanted to just kind of let you know all the great things that I think Gary's doing. So if you've got any questions.
Thank you.
All right. Well, thank you so much, we appreciate the time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I guess we need to leave something on.
Thank you for the cookies again.
Yes.
Stay true to that.
Thank you. Let me know if you need anything, Ron.
Thank you, guys.
All right, thank you so much.
Again, now we go to the administrator.
Yes, ma'am. And I'm going to do some of it from here and then I'm going to do some of it from there. The first one, the local update 121, and I included this in your newsletter this weekend. This is Tasby's yearly update of their policies. And if you looked through it, there's some of them that have no change, like one word stretched out and one word changed. Some of them were just to replace. There was some on safety, there was some on pest management, just random stuff that they just needed to update. And so you'll have that in a bit on an action item to go ahead and approve that, so we can go ahead and put that in the policies. The next thing, and I'm going to have Chief and Mr. Lieutenant, Eddie Roach, come up real quick. Every year, we have our overview of our SRO structure and our local agreement. And I just asked Chief and Roach to come because they're the two guys that kind of head this up to answer any questions you have. But I do want to add before I say anything, I can't speak for Chief, but I have massively enjoyed getting to know him over the first two months, three months of this. We have had a lot of talks and I think the partnership from what it was to what it is is a huge turnaround and it's, it's been fun. So I'm, I told him I wouldn't change anything, I just, I just want us to get better. Working together and doing things right. Do y'all got anything to add to that?
I agree wholeheartedly. The working relationship has improved dramatically. I think we have a great team, you know, Eddie and I communicate, you know, Mr. Ritchie and I communicate regularly. I think, you know, being asked to just come in and problem solve before we have a problem, I think is a major thing. I do that over there as well. I think it's great and I agree, I don't want to change a thing.
Well, sir. Anything?
Y'all got questions?
Well, I think it's great because I know we harp a lot on trying to communicate and we, it has to start here.
Absolutely.
In order to, for it to trickle down.
And I think, we talked about the past, about past eight months, about having a fifth.
Fifth one, yeah.
I think that's something we need to look at.
It is.
If you lose one, you got two or three months before you.
Yes, sir.
I just don't like that any of our, I don't want our campus to ever go without a SR.
No.
Even for an hour.
A hundred percent.
I just want them there.
You know, and Eddie and I have talked a lot and it ties back to what I'm going to talk about here in a minute. We just got to make sure we find the finances to do so, but it is definitely a place, there's one of the legislative things that could possibly give a little money to us that we could go into that. But it's, I told him two days ago, it's still, it's still there. We just got to, we just got to figure out where we're going to fund it at. We've got a good plan though, we've already kind of given them a spot to have as a central headquarters, like April said, and I've told them, I don't ever want y'all off campus, but on days that after school, whatever they need to meet, they'll have, they'll have a place to do so. And Roach's thoughts, and you may add to this, if you have a fifth guy, is for those four to be on campuses, that way Eddie can get wherever he needs to get, whenever there's a problem. Is there anything you'd like to add to that?
Yes, sir. That, to me, that's very important, because like, like y'all were saying, you know, any time that we have something major happen or, you know, supervisor leaving, I have to leave north. And that leaves it unoccupied. Boy, it is across the street, yes, but.
It's not ideal.
You know, he's not on campus. So that's why I, you know, I put out the fifth officer option for us, that way.
And I think you've got some ideas, right? I mean, of people, like we've talked about specifically that might be interested.
Might be interested. Chief, let's provide me with them. A good option?
They got to go to training. Yes. It's my sick. Because I've filled in quite a few calls.
It happens a lot. Yes, sir.
Especially at South, those, they don't want their babies without.
Yes, sir.
And if I may, something I've tasked Lieutenant Garza with, that my patrol lieutenant is, when they are short one, is to make sure that our patrolmen are making regular stops on the campuses that they're short. We're trying to come up with it, we're shorthanded too, but we're training, so we're trying to come up with that. I've also tasked my administrators to make visits to, you know, the campuses and I'll coordinate with Eddie some, but this is something I have not gotten a chance to talk to Eddie about, I know it missed it with you about. In order to supplement this interlocal, something that I'm trying to do on my side is expand our criminal investigation division. I'm hoping to do that this upcoming budget and my plan is to have a detective just for juveniles. If I can get that approved and get that up, it's a work in progress, then Eddie would have a detective solely at his discretion to do juveniles. And that's kind of the plan we're working with right now, but I think it'll just supplement our relationship and just bolster our efforts.
And I think what you said about, you know, being, I think it's being visible if they make those rounds and just, it helps people aware of that.
Oh, I appreciate that, yeah.
And they're great about it. I think I've just texted Chief a few times and said, hey, we've got something in the air, just have you guys make a few rounds around the school. It's just been great. And Roach and I have worked together for a while, I've always had a ton of respect for Roach. I just, this is one of the relationships, I'm having to rebuild a lot, but I feel like this one has grown a lot. So I just appreciate them.
Well, thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Chief, you don't have to stay, I know you've got business. Roach, you do. It's kind of staying on the same note and I'm going to, Dr. Nelson's worked way harder than I have on this. I have just kind of gotten to be in a lot of the talks and on a lot of the tours, but we have gotten how many bids now on our?
Four.
Four. So go ahead and kind of talk them through where we're at with that, Dr. Nelson.
So committee's met three times formally since I've been here, two times on the current initiative to make sure we understand what the requirements of the state's safety plan, what they are, and make sure that we are in minimum compliance. And our goal was to get there with the current grant. At first, we didn't think we'd be able to get there, but now looking at some of the bids we have, if we move in the, in the right direction, we could actually meet the minimum safety standards with the current grant. And then any additional funds we get or any local funds that we have that we can contribute to will help us get over the, not over the top, but to the other level of the standards. I will tell you, I won't be able to say a lot of things publicly about the kind of things we do on the committee, you're on the committee, you're on the committee, we can't, we don't want to share out too much information. If the board ever wants to know specific details, it is something that you can do a closed session. You can go in a closed session, discuss security and we can get more detail. But for your knowledge, there are four primary areas. I'm confident we'll be complying in three of those areas. One of those areas, we have four bids already. Another area, we are, it may, it may cost an amount that won't exceed and require three bids, but if it does, I won't have a problem getting three bids. I had a walk-through with the fence and gate contractor this week, earlier this week?
Yes, sir.
My, we used to run it together. But earlier this week, he and I walked all the campuses and we looked at what we need to do in terms of fencing and gates. We're, he said, we're in really, really good shape with fences, we really are. We're not as in great shape with gates and so that'll be the focus of that work, so we'll take care of that. And just so you know, gates should have two purposes, to keep the bad guy out, but also let the good guys off the campus when they need to. And we're good at keeping them, well, we're pretty good at keeping them out, but we're not as good as letting the good guys off the campus, if that makes sense. It's an area that the state addresses as regress, being able to get away when you need to. So that's kind of what we're focused on, I'm excited, Mr. Ritchie's excited when we can start to look at some of the numbers. The first bid we got, it was taking us 14 years to get there, if we went with the first bid, that's an exaggeration.
Not much.
Not a lot of exaggeration, but it was very expensive. The other bids have been much more reasonable and as we look at the quality of the work, they're very comparable to, to the Ferrari version versus some of the Ford and Chevy versions, I think will be okay. But that's kind of where we are. The committee will meet again.
We don't know when.
I didn't send the date yet, did I?
No.
Okay, I'll send it tomorrow. The committee will meet again.
This Monday?
Did I get canceled?
The past Monday got canceled.
The past, this past Monday got canceled because I didn't have, I didn't have all three bids and I was expecting a fourth, but I got the third and the fourth in. But we will meet soon and we will look at the specific bids, we'll talk about the quality of the bids, not just the, not just the finances of it. And then Mr. Ritchie and I will make a recommendation to you guys for the, a vendor, and then from there, you guys, we will talk about it and we'll go from there. That will have to go to the board for approval. Anything greater than $50,000, of course, has to come to you guys. And so the plan is to bring that to you guys in July.
Questions? All right, this next thing, guys, I think it's something that I need to do tonight. I also think it's something I need to do again in July, because I think it's too important and I think, one, I think it'll help you guys hear it twice, but I think everybody needs to hear it, those that are not hearing. I've, I've talked to you guys all the way back to the interview about this, I don't know that I ever referred to it as that A3F refresh, but I think I've told y'all that the accountability standards are about to change. And where we have seen ourselves is not necessarily where we are. Like a lot of things, it is good to know where we're at, because we know what the work is ahead of us. And so I wanted to go ahead and share this with you guys, because it's slowly going to start becoming public, but they're calling it, the state is calling it the A3F refresh and I just caved it to us. I am going to play this, I think, as long as I can make it work, because it is from the commissioners specifically to school boards. And I think it would help for you guys to, to hear it, as long as, and if it doesn't work, it worked earlier.
Meet ground early, go. Your go-to solution for getting quality work done quickly.
Hello, school board members. My name's Mike Marat, I'm Commissioner of Education for the state of Texas. And I am a former school board member. I served on the Dallas Board for four and a half years. And school board service is critical. When you think about the role that you play in our republic, you are where the buck stops, the governing body of the local school district. And you are responsible for how well those schools work and how well we serve collectively all five and a half million souls in Texas public schools across the state of Texas. Thank you for your work. It is hard, daunting, and the pay is pretty terrible for a school board member. So thank you for your work. One of the things that I reflect on as a former school board member, one of the responsibilities that I held, was I needed to know how well our schools were doing in Dallas. Were they the same? Were they getting better? Were they getting worse? Because it was my job to oversee our administrative team and make sure that we were making progress for kids. And so what the agency does, what TEA does, to try to help improve your ability to govern your school district, is we provide A3F ratings, which then gives a summative evaluation of all of your schools. And so every year, when A3F ratings come out, you can take a look at the ratings, see if you compared to last year and you say, oh my, school's getting better, are they about the same, are they getting a little worse? And you can then help build action plans with your administrative team accordingly, to support our kids. What has been true for A3F for the last five years, really since 2017, is it's been basically the same system. The cut points have been basically the same, the mechanics have been basically the same. We evaluate schools holistically on the better of student efficiency or student growth. As you all well know, evaluating schools is complex. Our little humans are very, very complex creatures. And so trying to get a single picture of performance is difficult, but A3F does that very holistically. And the fact that it has remained unchanged since 2017 is also super helpful, because you can then look at this year's results, your teachers can look at this year's results, your parents can look at this year's results and see, you know, is the school getting better? What kind of progress are we making for kids? It was not always like that in Texas with the school rating system. Before the A3F system, the agency, the way TDA worked, would tweak the ratings every single year. They basically raised cut scores ever so slightly every, any given year. And that was good in terms of setting goals that are constantly higher and helping us push forward for kids, but it made life really confusing as a school board member in Dallas in my old life, because I would have a hard time figuring out, you know, our last year's results, the same or better than this year. But the downside of what we've done over the last five years is we do want to constantly get better for kids. We want to make sure that we are setting higher and higher goals. In fact, the statute that sets up A3F requires us to continuously increase cut scores to ensure that Texas is a national leader in preparing kids for post-secondary success. So this year, we are refreshing the A3F rating system. We will be using the information that we've gleaned over the last five years, all the feedback that we get from educators, from parents and others, to update the way the ratings work. And what that also means is that the ratings that you look at this year cannot be easily compared with last year's ratings. Now, there's a few places where cut scores are actually changing, in some cases going up, and so it will, it will no longer lead to an apples-to-apples comparison. So to try to make life easier for you, what we are doing is we're publishing preliminary what-if ratings, using last year's data, but using the new rating system calculations. And so that way, when ratings come out this fall, you'll be able to look at, compare this year's actual ratings with last year's sort of hypothetical what-if calculation ratings. And that way, you can have a good apples-to-apples comparison of performance. We're going to also put those hypothetical what-if ratings up on TexasSchools.gov, so that when parents or teachers or anybody in the community wants to evaluate year-over-year performance, they can compare this year's performance with last year's performance using this year's metrics. So we hope that this helps make the jobs that you have as a school board easier, but it's also going to be important for all of us to kind of communicate about this, to make sure everybody's up on the same page. So we'll be communicating more about this in the fall when ratings come out. We have provided your superintendent with hypothetical, where preliminary what-if ratings, so they can go over those with you. And there's a lot more details if you want to get into the mechanics of it. We have all that information on our website, provided that information to your superintendent. But I wanted to just talk to you directly about these changes, because I knew that this would be important for me as a former school board member and hope that this is valuable for you. Thank you for your work, thank you for the service that you do for our kids. School boards are critical to the foundation of our democracy and to highly functioning school systems. God bless you for what you do.
All right, so basically in a nutshell, what he just said was, state detective. the state of Texas was getting too good at the old system, so they need to change it to make it a little harder to be what you've been. And Ms. Baumann's going to kind of chime in on some of this stuff, too. And I, I kind of told you guys where we have always been able to help our scores through our CCMR, our college career military readiness. We figured out a way to work the system, not work the system, it was a legitimate way to do it, but it kind of escalated our scores, so it, it didn't put as much emphasis on the growth we had on STAR tests. The way they changed it, you are going to see the true growth on STAR tests, along with the college career military readiness, but they have changed the way, they have upped that cut point, as well as changed the way you can get to that cut point, to make it much harder. When they first set it in 2017, they set it at 60% of the 100 that they originally planned to, because they wanted schools to have the ability to get that. Now, 70% of the schools in the state of Texas are exceeding that original cut point, so they needed to raise that cut point. And in the process of that, they also changed the way that they're going to kind of come up with everything. Now, the actual what-if number is not public. I know it, and y'all are about to know it, but the public won't know it until later on, later on in the, in the fall. But this does affect all schools, so I'm just going to kind of go through it and tell you what has changed. And Ms. Baumann, again, chime in anytime you need to. But according to state law, the purpose of A through F accountability, and it's pretty much what the commissioner just says, is to continuously improve student performance, eliminate achievement gaps, and prepare students for post-secondary success. Growth, that's what we all want, right? To continuously get better. That's the point of an A through F system. And you can see exactly what he was talking about, so it hasn't changed. But starting in 2019, TEA started gathering input from educators, from superintendents, from principals. We knew it was going to change. They started getting input on what those changes are going to look like. They are still getting input. So even the what-if rating we have may not be the final one, because input keeps going until June 20th. At June 20th, they're cutting it off, and at that point, the new system is what it is. So that'll kind of help you reflect. All right, that's what the point of the what-if rating is. And the way he said it was in the past, if you were a B in 2018 and you were a C in 2019, you could look at that and say, we went from a B to a C. All right, something happened, we need to get fixed, and we need to start going back in the other direction. With this what-if rating, you can't do that, because the methodology that they're rating us with is substantially harder. So they want to take last year's data, with which we were a B. All right, Lamisa ISD was an 81, all right? So the what-if rating takes that data, applies the new methodology, and tells us kind of more where we are going to be moving forward, if that makes sense. So the number, the new number to me is our baseline, and now it is to grow from that number. So what is a what-if, and I've kind of said it, and the commissioner kind of said it. 22 and 23 use totally different systems. And because of the A through F refresh, we're under different rules. And so you can't compare them apples to apples unless you use the what-if rating. So the right, what-if ratings are preliminary versions of campus and district ratings using the new methodology with the old results, all right? They don't replace the old results. We're still a B in 2022, no matter what the new methodology says. It doesn't change what we were in 2022. It just tells you if we had applied it, this is what you really would have been. All right, and it's open, you can see that third bullet point, it's open for public comment all the way to June 20th, because there are still people putting in input. Once the what-if ratings came out, a lot of school leaders had more input. Because here's some of the complaints is raise the cut scores without raising what it takes to get those cut scores, or leave the cut scores the same and change what it takes to get to those cut scores. But what they did is they did both. They didn't just change how to succeed, they also grew how far you got to get to succeed. All right, so they've made it harder. And so we've got to rise to the occasion and change the way we do things to make sure that we improve our schools.
And I will say, I was in a training last week, and because of the open comment and the things that, the feedback they're getting, if we had looked at this back in August, to what it is now has already drastically changed. I think about every three months, they have gone in and made changes. So when we say they're preliminary, there is a huge chance there will be changes even to that what-if after June 20th, when that closes.
So what if final versions of campus and district ratings will be shared alongside the 2023 ratings in the fall of 2023. So what that means is the new methodology will be used, and when they give us what we are in 2023, they are also going to put out the what-if from 2022, so there's an easier comparison. And this will allow board members, educators, parents, and the public to get a sense of whether the performance rating issued in '23 present higher, lower, or similar performances rating, ratings issued in '22. And you hear me talk about CCMR a lot. College Career Military Readiness operates behind. So 2022 was actually graduates from '20, '21, because it's one year behind. So even when we get our '23 rating, the CCMR aspect of it is going to be a year behind, because they have to have the time to track where did they go? Did they really go? Did they stay? Did they go, you can say you're going to the military, but we need proof that you really went to the military. And so it's always a year behind. All right, so that's what we, that's what our grading scale looks like in 2023 and moving forward. And it is substantially different than what it has been in the past. And Ms. Baumann, you may want to kind of explain to them the difference in the Domain 1, Domain 2A, Domain 2B, and how we get to where we get.
Okay, does this have anything to do, like, this is, I guess, district-wide, like, the K through 12, or is it going to be by campus?
So Lamisa ISD, and I don't know when, when was that?
Two, I mean, it was only for two years, isn't it?
We are still seen as one campus. And so we will not see how each, we will see how each campus performed, but we will not get a letter grade for each campus. It will be district-wide.
And that is one of the things that's changing as a whole. If you are separate, they're, they're figuring that differently based on the amount of people on a campus instead of just looking at it as a whole. Whereas in the past, like, your north, your middle school, your high school, kind of all carried the same weight. High school was more because of CCMR. Now they look and say, which campus has the most kids? That's going to carry a bigger percentage, and so they weighed it out a little differently. So that, that's new this year, but for us, we're counted as a K to 12, so we have a pretty straight line of, of little pies, pie chart graph things, Pac-Mans. And so basically what it comes down to, those first three, you have an orange, a green, and an orange. The first one, Domain 1, the second one, Domain 2A, and then the third, Domain 2B. They will take the higher of whichever one of those it is. So your Domain A is just your performance. How did y'all do on STAR? Because we're K-12, CCMR counts in with that, and so does your graduation rate. But that's just for STAR, approaches, meets, and masters, what was your percentage? The academic growth, there is a little bit of change to that this year for Domain 2A. In the past, it's just been growth from here to here. They're separating it into two types of growth this year. So you'll have an annual growth, all your kids, did they grow a year's worth and a year's worth of time? But then with House School 4545, there's going to be an accelerated group that they monitor as well. So if you failed STAR last year, you've gone through your 4545 remediation, they are looking to see, did you actually grow? Was your 4545 working? So those kids in that area kind of count for us twice, because they're in the all group and then the accelerated instruction group. So we've really got to watch those, and they just changed 4545 to some different stuff as well, so we're, we're keeping up with that. Then Domain 2B is your relative performance. That's where they take, how are we doing compared to other schools that are like us? There weren't really many changes with that, but once again, because of our K-12, it's STAR and CCMR. And because of our size, there's not just a whole lot of other K-12s that look just like us, so it's kind of in random places. But whichever one of those is highest counts as your overall 70%. The other 30% comes from Domain 3, and that's all the little bitty colors on the last one. This is where the biggest changes come in. Tellpass, which is your EL proficiency, not only did that change in this, they changed the test. So this year, it's kind of on a hold with some of the way they score it. The writing for Tellpass, they were, I guess, piloting it this year. It is scored by the computer. So because they don't know how that's really going to work, the writing will not count towards accountability in this. For an EL student, if they want to be reclassified, it does, but when it comes to your accountability, that parts out. So they're just looking at the reading, speaking, and listening. Your student group sizes, which, that's like your, where would it be up there? And that academic achievement, there's target groups that they look at. Used to, you would have to have 25 in a group. They've lowered that to 10 in a group. That probably won't hit us all that much, but maybe in some. And then we have what they are calling now a high-focus group or a supergroup. So with closing the gap, used to what they would do, they would monitor all your different subpops, and you would have to reach this percentage, this percentage. So you had a student that was special education, dyslexia, bilingual, and then all group. So they get counted four times. So what they've done is they've created, there's three categories. The first one, all students, all students will count in that. And then one of the other categories is they take your lowest two ethnicity groups from the year before and track those kids. And then they have that high-focus group, which they put them in with your, your ECODIS, your special education, your dyslexia, all those that used to count separately, they put them into one. So it's now three ways they can count, whereas in used to, they would kind of count sometimes like eight times per test, per kid. So this is something we really don't know a lot about, even when we were there last week. And what they talked to us with CCMR changes, like you said, not just changing the cut points, but how you get them combined with everything else. Domain 3 is by far the biggest area that is hardest for us to predict, and it's very unknown for us. But it makes up 30%. So when you look at it, our 70% is what we really want, and if you get good growth going, for elementaries and middle schools, it can almost count as 85%, because it'll count in multiple areas. But it'll be the best of the first three combined with Domain 3.
It's a lot. I mean, so, and I don't expect it to digest today. That's why I do, I think we need to see it again. But do you have kind of questions over that? And if we were not a K through 12 campus, it would be different. Because with us being a K through 12 campus, our elementaries are also influenced by how we do in CCMR, because we are one.
Is there exploration for the K through 12?
It is not a, no, ma'am, but I do think it's something that needs to be revisited. And we've already started having those conversations, because at the time it was done, it was done because it, it helped our rating. Now, we are not sure that that is as beneficial as it was. And so we're going to revisit and see what's best for Lamisa moving forward. I'm going to skip that one, because that was just for our eyes right now. This preliminary what-if, what-if presentation is meant to inform, and there's nothing to be done, right? I mean, there's nothing to be done. I'm about to show you a timeline of when all of this, and that, it's not exact, because at the very top, May 31st, what-if ratings were released to districts that, that actually, they weren't ready. They didn't release them until June 8th. But we are in this between June 9th and August 16th range. All right, so June 20th, they finally close off public comment. That's the last time they're going to take everybody's input on what they would like to see done. June 30th, EOC results are published in the Family and Analytic Portal. So EOC results are end-of-course exams. That's what the ones that the kids at the high school took. And then on August 11th, you start seeing STAR 3 through 8 will be given to us. On August 16th, it will be given to the parents. And then in early September, they will finally have the Accountability Manual adopted, and then so that is when the ratings will come out. And the two biggest dates really for us are September 26th and September 28th. 26th, we get it. 28th, everybody gets it. So that kind of makes sense.
Parents have gotten like a raw guesstimate of how their kids did, and they keep asking, I think a lot of people think we're holding on to information. We honestly have no idea how they did. They fall into a likely pass, what they call a zone of uncertainty, and a likely did not pass. And the zone of uncertainty takes up
Most.
Almost all. So we don't know what to tell parents. So just kind of FYI, if you have somebody ask, we're not holding on to it.
And it's frustr, it's frustrating, because if you think about that, the reason they're in the zone of uncertainty is because they're waiting to see how everybody did. Because they need a certain amount in the state of Texas to do pretty good. They need a certain amount to have not done good, and then they need a whole lot of people to be somewhere in the middle. So it almost doesn't matter how you did, it matters how everybody did, so they can set their cut points, how they want. Which it's like, it's like knowing the score before the game starts. It's, it kind of sets you up for a bad thing. But it's no different than I've said with everything, guys. We are where we are, and now it's time to start getting better, right? So in fall 2023, TA will provide comparisons of 2023 ratings to the what-if. That's what we've been saying over and over. TA press release will be in September, and TA communications with members of the media, and then it'll be posted on TexasSchools.gov. And then, of course, you can download them anytime you get on the TA website. You can download past years and kind of see how everybody's done. So that's it in a nutshell, and I know it's confusing, but I will tell you, we got our EOC results back individually for kids, and we had some kids that have never passed pass. And we were pumped. And I think that's where I'm a little frustrated, because I think we're going to see better STAR scores for us, yet our rating might not be, because they're looking at it different, the rating might be discouraging. Whereas we have some individuals that succeeded when they haven't in the past.
But we'll be able to see that growth now, right?
That's the goal, you know, and it kind of goes with everything, Ms. Martinez. It's, goes back to the balance we've got with this budget and not being able to find teachers, but making sure we are able to do what we got to do, you know, here. And it's, it's, it's a tight line to walk, but that's what we're going to do. We're going, we're going to get after it, and we're going to grow and get better. So I'll share it with you guys here in a bit, but you don't get it.
Now we'll go to team school officiating and elective class information.
And I also included this in the, in the weekend newsletter. This is something I am very excited about, and I heard about it a year ago because as an ex-coach, I knew officials were hard to find. They just, it's no different than anything. They don't want to do it anymore. And so they, TA created a class for the whole state of Texas that, that counts as an elective. And they're not going to put kids in bad spots. They're going to allow them to do middle school games and sub varsity games, but that's money, you know, it helps, it helps the communities. And it wouldn't just be Lamisa people. Our kids can be a member of the Lubbock chapter, and then go over to Lubbock, Texas, over to Lowry Field and officiate games over there, and get paid as a normal official. It won't affect any track. It doesn't, it, it will only be for kids that have kind of taken care of all their business, that got their track going in the right direction, and they're able to, instead of having a do not come, they want to take this officiating class. You guys got any questions over it? It's going to be awesome. It does need board approval, so that's the only other thing that's on the action items here in a little bit. And then, guys, I can go the legislative overview. I think we kind of hit on a lot of it just talking. There's a lot of legislation that passed due to safety that, that I think is going to be good. They raised the allotment. We get a safety allotment per student. They raised it 28 cents. They had talked about raising it to $100. They raised it to 10. You know, they're, they're holding on to some money, but at the very least, we are going to get something. And going back to the question you asked a while ago, Ms. Gonzalez, and this is something Dr. Nelson and I had talked about, they're also doing things like giving fifteen thousand dollars per campus in the district. Hurts us right there because instead of getting fifteen per campus, we, we get fifteen. You know, and so there's a lot of things that I, we need to revisit about what's best for us moving forward. Um, one of the ones, and when, uh, when Chief was here, he said, I don't know if y'all heard, but he said, talking about problems before they happened, we, we had him come up with Mrs. Stewart yesterday because of the House Bill one fourteen, and this just blows my mind. And I'll just read it as they wrote. This is, "House Bill one fourteen makes optional the removal of a student from class and placement within DAP for a student who possesses, uses, or is under the influence of marijuana." That is insane to me.
Say that first part again?
It makes optional the removal of a student from class and placement within a DAP for a student who possesses, uses, or under the influence of marijuana.
And who's lived with that decision?
Well, we have the decision, kind of. And you may want to talk about this too because there's a whole different side to this. You want to talk about the special education law before I say something that says it differently? So there's general ed students, special ed students. So general ed students, exactly as it says, it is optional, okay? Special education, and they've, we've already met with loggers, and this is dead accurate. It's, it's public.
I know. So you want to, we can talk about it later.
There's some things that any time a special ed student gets in trouble, we have to, instead of just sending them to DAP or ISS, any time they're out of placement for over ten days, and you only get ten free days for the whole year. So from the beginning of the year till the end of the year, if they miss one class out of placement, that's out of placement for the whole day, it doesn't matter. So if they're out for ten minutes, that's out of placement for a day, so you've wasted a day. We have ten free days every year that you get to start with. After we did that, we cannot move a student out of their placement unless we have an ARD, and we have to give parent five-day notice to have an ARD, or they can waive it, but sometimes they don't want to waive it because they're getting a sit-in class while we have to make this decision. So with that being said, and where we might have said DAP automatically, but that was just the kind of easy thing that we would, we knew. If it was THD, they wanted DAP, we didn't have to say that it's not, and their disability didn't cause it. Now we do. Um, we can't just automatically send them to DAP for that, there's no mandatory DAP for it. And even if we do, so what happens if they get disciplined by the AP? After that, they come to us, and they're like, okay, we need to set up an ARD, and it's called a manifestation determination to see if that's part of their disability. And if we come together and we decide that it is part of their disability, we can't punish for their disability. So a lot of people don't understand that, and we also can't tell other parents, you know, what's going on. So we might have, say, me and Ms. Baumann were together, and we were both smoking weed, we're not supposed to. I'm special ed, she's general ed, she automatically goes to DAP, I don't. And it's not because we don't want to, that's what we're legally tied to. So it's really hard to explain because we can't explain that to other parents, we can't talk about other kids. Especially if they're a special education student, we can't speak of it. We have to say, it's being handled, and that's all we can tell you. But we have to go to ARD, we have to say if it is part of their disability, which normally we would say that's not part of their disability because
It was always the easy cut and dry.
So that was very easy for us. We didn't have to say, go through the whole thing. But now they've kind of taken that away from us, and we had the service center come, that was Monday, right?
Yes.
On Monday, and they took it a step farther. Um, me and Ms. Baumann had gone to the law conference the week before, and they were telling us about this, and we were all just like, that can't go through, there's no way. Well, it already went through. So the service center was coming to talk to us, and she said they even got a step farther from that on DEA that says if they have special education, then that is a coping mechanism for them. So that
So that's why we called Chief because we got to figure out a way to, to do this, you know?
It's just another step in normalizing the use of marijuana.
It is, and, and here's, here's really how it came about.
So it cuts to, especially if it cuts to school drop?
Yeah.
No.
It's a mechanism?
No, but, but
So we got total alcohol. Now, if it's outside of marijuana, then we can look at it.
The actual House Bill separates, it pulls out marijuana and alcohol.
Everybody's gonna want to be special ed.
Well
Well, I like, but there's one more thing to this, do you want to go ahead and?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, so another law that was passed through, and it was passed through with a dyslexia one, so we really don't know. I'm guessing somebody wrote it in, and so it just slid through with the dyslexia one. Because now if any student goes to DAP, we have to offer them a special ed referral.
Well, it's okay, you qualify.
If they, if they've replaced the DAP, but within five days of getting out, we have to offer a special
Doesn't mean they qualify.
It doesn't mean they qualify.
But we have, they, they
Okay, well, what are the qualifications for it?
Well, we have to go to school, that was testing.
Yeah, full, the full diagnosis.
So any, any, let's just say if a student has stoned, you go to, I mean, yeah, you go to the, DAP, they're gonna get a referral to
Without, without half, we have to offer it, legally.
Parents may say no.
Apparently, they know.
But as soon as they get, okay.
Here's, here's what I think happened.
It kind of set us up as well.
Oh, my gosh.
And she may disagree or agree, but every year, the state of Texas looks at our out-of-placements. Like she said, we get ten days, and they saw there was too many out-of-placements. All right, so they're gonna see what were those out-of-placements? What was the main one? This, how do we make this not the main one? We passed this.
So how it's kind of explained to us was, um, exactly like he said. So when we get in a compliance plan with TEA, we have to do what they need. TEA isn't a compliance plan right now with federal, so they're having to turn it in. So there was too many out-of-placements for vaping through Texas. So people are getting sent to, like, DAPs were overcrowded because of vaping. So TEA's compliance plan was, we won't do anything anymore about vaping if they're special ed.
So accountability is just kind of
It's crazy. So, and, and
We're trying to figure out.
And we are, and that's why we sat down with, with Chief yesterday because, um, you know, and young, we, we can't let it go. We can't just let it be okay.
Yeah.
You know, and so he's gonna visit with a lot of the Lubbock people. He has a meeting later this week or next week where they're all gonna sit down and talk about how the other schools are handling this so we can get an idea. The other thing we have to do is offer, not offer. We have to give anybody that gets caught special education or general education, we have to give them drug counseling within the thirty days afterwards, I'm all good with that because I think we need to be doing that anyway. But, uh, it's just, it, it's
Well, there's a lot of legal, if we don't do it the right way, it
Oh, a hundred percent, yeah, for sure, but
It just made our, it, it just, our, we already have a lot of referrals because the dyslexia is now under special education. Now it's just gonna go through the road. So I've been like following along with other schools to see, everybody's like, we, there's not enough DIs in Texas. We already, there's already a shortage, so we're like, how are we gonna do this?
Like, we're lucky that we have the ones we have because most schools don't. So, and I just, you know, I highlighted that one because I thought it was one that, man, y'all, that, that's just insane to me. Um, they, some
Thank you.
Some other legislation, uh, involve school assess, school threat assessment teams have to involve the parent now. In the past, the parent was kind of got told after the fact, now they have to be involved. Um, y'all can see, guys, I've got page after page, um, you know, and I try to include more of this on our weekly newsletter when it, when it's applicable. But it's a, it's a challenging, challenging thing, but we're gonna figure it out. I think y'all hear me say that a lot, we are where we are, now we just got to figure it all out moving forward and, and, and do what we can do. There's not a lot on the construction side. We did have some leaks with the big rain, uh, you know, and that's really when you find out you have leaks. And Dr. Nelson and I went over there with, uh, with Richard, the architect, on Wednesday, Tuesday. And I think we all, he, he found the first one, uh, but figured out why and get them fixed, uh, you know, so.
None of them had to do with the AC?
No, well, one of them in the auxiliary gym was under the AC, so they were gonna check that. Most of them had to do with, with just being sealed the right way.
Like flashing with the AC, not, you know, flashing around the unit, not the AC itself.
Right. That's a lot, guys, I'm sorry I went too long, but questions?
No, it's okay, it was good information.
Yes, ma'am.
No.
Yeah. Okay, I guess, um, we'll go to board action items. We have one deliberation and possible action to approve, approve local policies, CCGV, CFB, CKE, CKEC, CLB, CRF, CVA, CVB, DEA, FD, and FFI.
Oh, you got that one wrong.
I probably could, I could have.
I'll make a motion to approve as presented.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, five to zero. Next, deliberation and possible action to implement team sporting officiating elective.
I make a motion, we approve that team sporting officiating.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I have another question. On that, um, inter-local, when do we, when do we approve that? I mean, is it done every year, every two years?
It's done, we, we overview it every year, I think it's approved every two years.
Every two years, okay. So we just approved it last year?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Okay, um, I guess there be no further